Did you see the recording, Kipley?
I didn't notice them when I walked in.
Didn't notice we got pins. Is this for my years of loyal service?
Yes.
That's all you're getting.
It's nice, isn't it? Looks like my car sticker.
Good evening. This is a public hearing of the zoning board of appeals of the city of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from the decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation on to the city council. Present here tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Beth McLennan, Matthew Rogers, and I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. We therefore have a quorum. Also, present from city staff is Melissa Clots and Ken Cox. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time without interruption. It is not just civility, but is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After the applicant or appellant has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all the posting testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or appellant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and print your name on the pad provided for that purpose. We do not have a court reporter anymore in this room, so we will need everyone to be at a microphone when they do speak. We are audio and video recording. When all the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Melissa, you have here the 22nd, but we also technically have the prior meeting, which I actually don't have a copy of.
There was a motion to approve the minutes at the last meeting. There was a vote of three to zero with two abstaining, and as legal has determined, three votes given five people is enough for a vote.
Okay. So a majority of the present quorum. Okay. All right. Then that being said, we do have, as our first item, then, review and approval of the meeting minutes for January 22nd, 2013. Were there any comments or corrections regarding those minutes?
I did not have any.
If there are none, then is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for the meeting held on January 22nd, 2013. Do I need to add anything else?
Second. It's been moved to second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And we'll note, Mr. Rogers was not at that meeting, so he's abstaining from the vote, so those minutes would be approved, three. By three people with one abstention. So, moving on then, we have no old business on our agenda, which brings us to our first item of new business, which is 3201 Hartzell Street. And we'll begin with Melissa reading that into the record.
Michael Gentile appeals the zoning administrator's decision to grant zoning relief, case number 12 ZMNV 0076, from section 6827 of the zoning ordinance that states maximum lot coverage in the R1 district is 30%. Section 6828A2 of the zoning ordinance that states the minimum yard requirement for a side yard abutting a street is 15 feet. Section 6828A3 of the zoning ordinance that states the minimum yard requirement for an interior side yard is five feet, and section 68210A of the zoning ordinance that states the maximum impervious surface ratio for the R1 district is 45%. 3201 Hartzell Street was granted relief to construct a two-story addition and a two-car detached garage with a maximum lot coverage of 39.1%, street side yard setback of 10 feet, interior side yard setback of 4.2 feet, and maximum impervious surface ratio of 45.3%. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as a part of the record include: appeal applications submitted January 4th, 2013; minor variation applications submitted October 25th, 2012; standards form, minor variance public notice; minor variance staff standards form; minor variance public notice of approval; zoning analysis; plat of survey dated June 30th, 2004; proposed site plan, elevations, interior floor plans; letters of support, map of supporters' properties, appellant's photographs, image of property, and aerial views of property.
Thank you. Just to check really quick, is Mr. Gentile here? Okay. And are there property owners here? Is it Alaco?
Alaco.
Alaco? Okay, thank you. All right. First, if I could, I'd like to swear in anyone who thinks they would at all possibly speak to us this evening on the subject. So if I could have you stand and raise your right hand, and then I'll do everybody for that. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? I still would like to carry that through, so you agree. Thank you. Okay, then. Mr. Gentile? I don't know if you or your attorney wanted to start, but you're appealing the decision of the zoning administrator in this case?
That's correct. Chairman Summers, Jeff Smith on behalf of the appellant. This is a classic, relatively small, but not to the parties involved, neighbor dispute of the type that we saw a lot of when real estate was booming in Evanston a few years ago, leading, as some of you may recall, to a proposed, quote, "monster house" or McMansion ordinance. Ultimately, that didn't prevail, in part because the feeling was that existing property owners could rely on existing code and its enforcement thereof. I'll start by summing up, and then ask Mr. Gentile to take the stand, and I'll ask him a few questions. But overall, you have here a house that's on a corner lot that's being built next to Mr. Gentile's house, which is on the smallest lot on the block. Directly to the west of him is a relatively large house that, depending how you look at it, is either three stories or a very generous two-and-a-half stories, but which already is overshadowing his house to some degree, but at least it's within scale for the lot. The lot of the applicant here is the second smallest lot on the block. It's roughly 40 by 125, 126, so we're not talking about a whole lot of area. So the attempt to put 30, to cover 39% of that lot with building structure is pretty significant, and the way in which it's proposed to be done essentially puts a sheer vertical wall next to my client's house, blocking out most of the light and sun, and in the process, putting that wall along a line that's already substandard, is only 4.2 feet from the lot line rather than, rather than five feet. So the standard that's exceeded or violated the most is the one of adverse impact upon adjoining property owners. But our position would also be that, in fact, there's the burden of proof of the applicant in showing that there's practical difficulty in achieving what they want to do within the standards hasn't been met, and that, to some extent, it's self-created, and that in some of the, those two important standards have really met with gross failure, such that the decision of the zoning administrator in this case is erroneous. The zoning administrator does go through the standards, and we're not contesting the decision on all of them, I'd like to point out. The proposed plans will exceed by a little bit the impervious surface that we're supposed to have on a lot. It's supposed to be 45%. This is 45.3%. That's de minimis, and Mr. Gentile isn't contesting that. However, the difficulty is self-created, because there's a lot of property to buy in Evanston, and when you buy a small lot, you know what you're getting into. The decision to try and build a four-bedroom house on a 40-by-126 lot is your own decision. There's nothing that compels... We all, most people have cars. Everybody has to have transportation to some degree. Windows, doors are necessities. Mudrooms, double vanity sinks, master closets are not necessities. So choosing to have those is our self-created conditions. Standard number two, which I'll ask Mr. Gentile to testify to, is the substantial adverse impact. The standard four on being consistent with the preservation policies, we agree that that's not an issue here in that case. Standard three, in being, in keeping with the comprehensive general plan, again, the comprehensive general plan favors a diversity of housing types within Evanston, and there are places where there is denser development, and there are places where there are larger, more expensive lots, and there are places where there are smaller lots which allow for modest housing to be purchased, and people to be able to enjoy the benefits of the, of what they pay for. And while this is R1, and to that extent is not inconsistent with the comprehensive general plan, considering that R1, as the zoning administrator recognizes, calls for the lowest possible density, what's happening on this particular lot and this particular block by allowing a development that exceeds the standards by, to such a degree, actually creates a microclimate of much greater massing. And finally, because of the foregoing, standard five is not met. It's not the minimum change that's necessary to alleviate the practical difficulty. There are other ways in which the difficulty could be addressed. Currently, the property has a, the property has a attached garage, and the plans are calling for a detached garage. That's a matter of choice. The plans are not utilizing the recent changes, which the zoning administrator was part of getting the city to adopt, that allow for a little more flexibility on third floors or the half-story above the second floor, if you will. The, there is more space on the Highland Street side than there is on the side adjoining Mr. Gentile's property that could, that could be worked with. I'm sure the architect here is a very creative person. I'm sure the contractor is creative, and this is not a situation where anybody wants to do anybody any harm. These were neighbors who got along pretty well until this disagreement came up. And it's unfortunate, but it's understandable, and people have aspirations, and people want, on the other hand, to preserve what, what they bought and the quality of life they enjoy. So it falls to this board to do what's fair. With that, I will ask Mr. Gentile to take the stand, and I'll ask him a few questions. Just state your name and address, Mr.?
Michael Gentile, 3205 Hartzell Street in Evanston.
Mr. Gentile, when did you move into the property at 3201 Hartzell, and why?
21 years ago, last week, because of the trees, because I fell in love with Evanston the first time I came here. I was living in the city at the time, Chicago, and I used to come up here on my bike, just to bike ride every Friday and Saturday, which were my days off. And came up Sheridan and toward northwest Evanston all that time. Took two-and-a-half years to, and my realtor will testify to that, to find the house that I wanted, and it was this one on Hartzell Street. 21 years ago, when I walked in, I knew it was the house after looking at houses for two-and-a-half years. I just knew it as soon as I walked in. So that's how I came to be an Evanston resident.
And during those 22 years, have you used your backyard?
Yes.
And how often do you use it?
Extensively in the summer, sunning friends over, planting tomatoes and the like.
You have tomatoes planted at the, at the moment?
They're dead now.
Well.
Yes.
You do that every year?
I do tomatoes.
And those rely on the sunshine that comes from the east and the west, I assume?
Yes.
Now, what rooms of yours, in your house, face to the east?
The den and the kitchen on the first floor, one upstairs bedroom, and a hallway.
And you don't have a separate family room, correct?
The den is the family room.
Right. So that is where you have most of your recreational equipment?
Yes.
TV, et cetera?
Yes.
Have you had an opportunity to review the plans that have been submitted by the applicant in this case?
Yes.
And do you have a sense of how far adjacent to your yard the proposed project will extend?
Yes.
And how much space is there right now? How much distance between the end of your house and your garage?
Well, I built an addition some six or seven years ago that is not, sort of, doesn't align with the brick part of the house. It's inlet, it's inlaid, so that it could have steps to walk out, and those would be sort of aligned with the rest of the house. So if, given that, it's, it's pretty tight between our two houses. I think there are some papers submitted or pictures submitted in the paperwork that shows the alignment of looking from my backyard to both houses and the space in between.
What I'm saying is, right now, there is approximately, would you say, strike that. Looking at your neighbor's house, the applicant, to the east, the furthest projecting part of their house currently is what?
Which way? North?
Going to the rear.
Going to the rear is a sun porch.
They have a sun porch, and what's that made of?
It's windows and a sloping roof and screens, I guess.
It's only one story?
One story, yes.
And?
You could see through it right now. So the line of sight takes you to, through to their other bushes on the east side.
And the distance from that currently to your garage is approximately what?
15 feet.
So there's not a large gap between your garage and the, where the houses end?
No.
So you have a relatively small area within which you can view any sky or trees to the east?
It's tiny, yes.
And what would be the effect of the applicant's project if built to the plans that have been submitted?
Okay. It would be staring at a brick wall, not from just where the sun porch is now, but that would extend two stories up and protrude further yet into the backyard. From their house today, according to the way I understand the plans, where their brick ends, they're bumping out 22 feet to the north.
I'm going to show you a couple of pictures that I understand are blowups of what you've already submitted to the zoning board. Could you show this to, I think the board members can see it from here, but...
Sorry. If you, if you, you can probably actually just stand back there, and we'll just reference, because we need you to be at a microphone, but we'll just, if, we'll get the gist of which, which image you're looking at, and we can see it in our packet here. Yes, yeah.
Could you identify there what, what's being shown?
Sure. This is the view from my bedroom window, and you see on the bottom of the picture, snow-covered, the roof of 3201 Hartzell. You see the power line that's from their property onto, I guess, the main alley over there. So I see, it's just starting from the lower left-hand at the corner, their backyard. The lined trees that, I don't know what, you know, the pine trees that are aligned through the periphery of their backyard. I see in the distance the, the pretty red house on the other side of Highland, that tree, the little, little garage that belongs to the yellow house on the other side of Highland, and of course, clouds, sky, and trees.
The roof that we're seeing, and along the very bottom of this picture, is the roof of that screened-in porch that you referred to?
Yes.
And how much of that scene visible in this picture would be visible if the proposed addition was built to the dimensions that have been submitted?
Okay. So this picture would be completely blocked out. Their proposed extension would extend about four feet or more past the end of the bottom of the picture, and it would go all to, always to, all to the second floor. So essentially, this whole picture would be black, or a brick wall, I should say.
There are a number of other pictures that are relatively similar?
Yes, one from the landing, one from the bedroom.
So the difference is simply where in your house they're taken from?
Yes.
But they all show essentially the same view?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And all of these would be similarly blocked?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile, how important is it to you to enjoy the, to have the existing light and views that you have?
Like anybody else, it's important, very important to me. I think when it comes to real estate, anybody who's walked into a dark house and gloomy house is a different feel than when they walk into a nice bright house that's well-lit and enjoyable. This, this brick wall would definitely detract from the enjoyment of not only the house, but the yard as well. I mean, I don't know anybody who could disagree with something like that.
Mr. Gentile, are you generally, do you follow the real estate market in your neighborhood in northwest Evanston generally?
Well, since it took me some two-plus years to actually buy in Evanston, yes, I still do follow it pretty closely. In fact, I still have Evanston reviews back from when I bought the house. I tried to get a year or two, just to see what the market is doing on the real estate side, just because I, I'm kind of interested. After two years, you just become an aficionado. So that's, that's one point. The second point is, when, when this came about, I was very disturbed because, and I did some self-examination to see if I was being fair, and I concluded I was because of the following point. I called my realtor, whom I still know after twenty-one years. She's an Evanstonian, and I asked her to look up on the MLS characteristics or attributes that say sunny and bright. And sure enough, she found bun, she found them. And then the next step of the exercise was to see what was the average selling time for sunny and bright versus attributes that never mentioned sunny and bright. And so I'm not lying to you. The average selling days with listings that had sunny and bright were eighty-two days on the market versus those that didn't have that attribute were an average of a hundred and forty days. This comes from the MLS and my realtor. So arguably, sunny and bright is an attribute that would detract from the value of my house.
So based on both your knowledge of houses that are attractive, unattractive, what sells and what doesn't sell in your neighborhood, combined with the investigation you've done, do you have an opinion as to what the impact of reduced light, sun, and views would be on your property?
I would venture to guess it's upward of $25,000 or more if I were to sell it versus have to go through this and try to sell it again under those circumstances.
Are there questions for you, if there's anything additional effect that you'd like to add?
I just wanted to, to really implore you to consider my situation. I'm not taking this lightly, and I know you aren't either, and I just hope you consider all angles. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to address a couple of points that the zoning administrator made in coming to the initial decision here.
Okay.
The administrative class takes the position that, when reviewing standard one, that the project is acceptable because it would be okay on a bigger lot, and that the practical difficulty is the lot. Well, you know, it's, that's one of those, if the, if wishes were fishes, the sea would be full. To say that this would be fine if it were, if it were only a 10,000-square-foot lot instead of what it is, really ignores the whole point of having zoning standards that are related to the size of the lot, which is to ensure, and specifically, that the scale of the house is in proportion to the lot, both for how it looks on that lot itself and for the protections of the neighbors. The discussion of standard one, again, goes into, it mentions that the garage, not the garage, the extension, will line up with the existing wall. Well, the existing wall is non-conforming. I'm not aware of, of this board as a, as a matter of practice, saying that that counts towards the practical difficulty or non-self-created standard. The, the petty aesthetics of wanting to line something up have to come in second to what, what the standards are and the reasons for, for the standards. The last time I was before this board, you were considering another property on Hartzell, and I can reference the case, it was 12Z MJV-0050, and the very issue came up of an extension. And at that point, there was a, a problem with that applicant's project, was that even though it was going, only going to be one addition, there was some recognition that this body in the past had been inclined to approve somebody going to a second story. And so therefore, if you allowed a non-conforming addition, you would end up with a, a non-conforming second story as well, ending up with the mass much closer to the neighbor's lot than what they anticipated. Well, here, we're dispensing with that step, and we're going straight to two stories only 4.2 feet away. If you look at some of the other pictures that have been submitted, you can see that it's a very narrow space between the buildings. Why that comes up in the discussion of standard one, I'm not sure, but that's where it is, so I'm addressing it there. There's no practical difficulty in achieving a five-foot setback because there's extra space on the Highland side. And in fact, when you look at the rendering, the rear or south elevation here, you see that the upper-story windows are off-center, and the entrance doesn't line up with the peak. It looks like everything, it almost looks like everything's been shifted over in order to allow for giving up and going back to the, to the five-foot standard. You'll also note that the Highland side, the side that faces the street, the public, gets more and nicer windows, whereas my client is basically getting a view that's going to be brick wall and, and shingles. Discussing the adverse impacts, the zoning administrator does acknowledge the loss of light, but the phrase is, "A loss of light will be present," which is kind of an odd way to put it. Basically, the normal way you would phrase it is, "This project will block the light. This project will block the view." And the adverse impact analysis relies on a straw man argument of a series of one-story additions. Nobody's proposing a series of one-story additions or requiring things to go out flat. There's, again, space on the other side, there are roofs, roof slopes that could be gabled and dormered, there are luxury features that are being proposed, and I don't, I don't begrudge anybody luxury features. The only thing is, they shouldn't come at the expense of, of your neighbors. So when you look at the question, what have you done, which is asked of the applicant, what have you done to minimize the impact on the neighbors? The answer is one of the more curious ones I've seen. It says, "Well, we didn't go any closer to their house." And I think my mom used to describe that as, "Thank heaven for small favors," you know? We could have been, we could have been worse. I don't think this, this board or administrative clots would have allowed anybody to go any closer when you're already at 4.2 feet. So you take that away, and there's really nothing that's been done to minimize the impact on, on Mr. Gentile. So in sum, the applicant just really doesn't meet the standards for variation on a number of grounds. And nobody begrudges an addition. People should have the right to build what they can within right. It's good for Evanston, we want to see housing stock kept up, we want people to be able to get along. My client has the right to depend on and rely on some reasonable enforcement of existing zoning code, and that's what we're asking for here tonight.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gentile at this time? Okay, I'm going to screw this up, Mr. Laco.
Hi, good evening. My name is Vince Weber. I'm a designer with Normandy Remodeling. I've been there fourteen years, and I've done extensive work up on the North Shore, up and down the North Shore, additions such as we're proposing for the Alacos, as well as all types of different interior and exterior renovations as well. When I met the Alacos, it's probably been a year and a half now, maybe two years, you know, they have a large family, and like most people who have a growing family, who have a house that is insufficient with space, as an old house often has, they're confronted with, "Do I move or do I improve?" And so just about, most of my clients are entertaining that these days, "Do I move or do I improve?" And, you know, it, it goes back to why most people do move to Evanston and a lot of the other North Shore communities, for its character, its difference in architectural styles, its, its context, and fitting within that context. And so when I met with David and Nina, you know, they were very, very adamant about making sure whatever we do create, if we do an addition, that it fits within the context of the existing home, that it, at the end of the day, looks as though it was built that way to begin with. And that comes with how you offset walls, it comes with the materials you use, the articulation in roof lines and dormers, and all of the alike. So after finally, you know, getting a basic understanding of what it is they wanted to do to improve the house, I'll just, you know, lay it out in sum. They needed a family room, a larger kitchen, a mudroom on the first floor. And the house has three very small current bedrooms, and they really wanted a fourth bedroom, and really a master suite, one that would be marketable in an Evanston market. So as a designer, one of the first steps is trying to determine which floor is actually going to drive the size of an addition like that. And, and often, as the case may be, like in this case, it's the second floor. It's the, the bedroom, the space one needs to create a bedroom, another bathroom, and an average, I would call it, walk-in closet to be marketed as a master suite. So after looking at their criteria of wanting to stay within the context of the architectural style, as well as just fulfilling the basic requirements that would make this house livable for the future, but also marketable in the future, the second criteria was making sure that we try and ask for the minimum allowed variance that would fulfill that requirement. And I think that's what's really been, I think, a nice thing that the Evanston community does offer, is this major and minor variance articulation between the, the two options. I wish most North Shore communities articulated it that way, in that, you know, it takes into account non-conformity in, in lot size a little bit. It allows you that, you know, if you end up having a lot such as this, that's, you know, over 2,000 square feet lower than the standard, that within a certain amount of criteria, hence a minor variance, that you're given some leeway. And that determination is made not by the zoning board, but by one head official. And so it was also in agreement that first day, that whatever we do, we're not going to try and even get a major variance. We could have, we could have been in front of you, you know, several months ago. I think we wanted to, out of just time for the board, time for the city, time for the clients, do whatever we can to just stick within the minor variance requirements. And so I'll start with the side yard setback next to, next to Michael. You know, the existing house is 4.2 feet away, and so, you know, again, it fits within the, the minor variance standard, that .8 feet, and really trying to line up that west wall, I think, is critical, in that any jog, to some degree, does allude to addition. And it goes back to one of the initial criteria of trying to make it seem seamless and like it wasn't added on to. And so to have a very small little jog or any jog in that wall would cause pause as to why. And, you know, I think also, given the, the fact that the lot is only 40 feet wide, and they're on a corner, so there is a much more restrictive nature to the street side, trying to be as, take it, you know, be, to line up with that existing wall is obviously beneficial in, in maintaining that architectural continuity, but also allowing us to have enough width in the addition to do what the client was hoping to do as far as a scope. On the street side, you know, there's another case where you've got a 40-foot lot width, to stay within the 15 feet on the street side and five feet on the interior side would really only allow you 20 feet to work with, which is half the width of the lot. So again, trying to stay within the minor variance limitations, obtain a little bit more width so that we can get that bedroom-bathroom configuration to work up on the second floor, as well as get an expanded kitchen on the first floor, as I'm sure you've all studied the, the floor plans a little bit and understand what I'm saying, and get what I would call today, modest and average spaces, modest and average bedroom. I'd say the bathroom is probably below average in that it's just a shower, not a tub and a shower, average-sized walk-in closet. And then a kitchen that I would also say is, you know, on the average size, but allowing us to have an eat-in kitchen, not just a dining room, and no eat-in kitchen. Most people looking at homes these days are really looking for an informal space to eat and a formal space to eat. A mudroom was crucial in, you know, allowing a, a family with lots of kids to come in and have a dumping ground to put things down before they come into the house. So again, I think it all goes back to, you know, trying to stay within the minor variance limitations, and more than anything, the, the non-conformity that the lot has. And I think there's obvious precedent with the zoning board and many other communities giving leeway to lot size as, you know, lot size is basically, it being non-conforming, some leeway to expand a house such as this, you know, to make it livable for the, you know, the, the family, but also for the future marketability of it. Let's see, so we addressed the side yards, the lot coverage. You know, again, the lot coverage, again, trying to keep it down to the minor variance requirements, and giving us enough square footage to, to get those basic necessities. I wouldn't say the spaces are large by any means, but in order to get a, a family room in those spaces we talked about, that was the footprint needed to make that happen. The garage, in terms of the lot coverage, is an absolute minimum size for a two-car garage. By the time you take into account wall thickness, you're only 19 by 19 on the interior, which I'm sure most of us have, or some of us have SUVs that are about that long. So again, just trying to keep the garage down to a minimum to fulfill the, the two off-street parking spots as well. Let's see, I wanted to address the, the self-created nature of, of the lot. I think the standard is, is addressing the fact that their current situation, for which they're asking for the variance, was that self-created. And, and obviously, it wasn't. The house was built many, many years ago, before both David and I were around, and so because of that non-self-created situation, that's why we're asking for, the variance we're asking for. The practical difficulty is, so that, that addresses standard number one, the practical difficulty is, is not self-created. Obviously, in asking for the variance, that new situation is self-created, but the condition as it sits existing was not self-created, which is why we're asking for the leniency. I wanted to talk about the large massing. You know, they addressed the, the height, and I wanted to talk about, you know, the 35-foot height restriction that Evanston imposes on this R1 residential district is, you know, we're well within that, too. We're two or three feet below that, I believe, three feet below that. But again, it goes back to context, it goes back to trying to blend an existing Tudor-esque style home that has very, very steep roof lines and, and match that same architectural style, so that it does blend seamlessly and, and steep roof lines and match that same architectural style so that it does blend seamlessly and does not allude to the fact that you've just added on to an addition. Could you add a lower roof? Absolutely. Is it the right thing to do, especially on such a visible corner lot, in my opinion, architecturally? Absolutely not, because it screams addition. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the letters of support. You know, we have, we have one case that was, I have to admit, you know, kind of a surprise. We had gotten through the whole public notice, the 10 days. We got that call from Martin Travis and we were all very excited that we could submit for permit to not, to find out a couple of days later that there was an appeal. And so, this is a little new to me. I've never gone through an appeal process, so it kind of breaks the mold as to the process of what I normally would go through, so excuse me for that. But, you know, it's, I think, very, very comforting to see the support that the Alacos have gotten from their neighbors, five or six letters, I believe, in the packet, all of which are very, very close in proximity and have views, both direct and in various points of their home, viewing the Alaco's house, all in very, very, very strong support. I'd like to address the light issue, sunny and bright, in quotes. You know, sunny and bright, as we all know, light in general is subjective. I think Evanston, like Chicago, is full of long, narrow lots where you're close to your neighbor. That is part of the context that makes up Evanston. And I think, you know, sunny and bright is a little misleading because that could be based on orientation of the house, the spaces that are most commonly used in the house with that direct south exposure. We're adding to the north. Light, direct sunlight doesn't come from the north. I mean, we all, we all understand that. And so, you know, the notion of sunny and bright, I think, is a little misleading, but more importantly, subjective. We're not making the current situation in terms of proximity any worse than it already is today. We're still over or near 10 feet from our west-facing wall to his east-facing wall. I think that's pretty generous and typical, more importantly, to Evanston with these lot widths and depths. Let's see. I think that covers most of my, most of my talking points. So, I addressed the setbacks, I addressed the lot coverage. I think we discussed the impervious surface is negligible. So, I don't know, I guess I'd like to open it up to David. Do you have any comments you'd like to make? Thank you.
Thanks. David Alaco, I'm the property owner. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself and family. We moved up to Evanston in 2004. My father told me never to buy a house in a corner lot. I didn't listen. We love this old house. We remain friends with the previous owners who lived in the house for over 30 years. And this house, I think, really deserved an update. It hasn't really been updated in 40, 50 years. I think we've gone through the right process to do the right things for this property and neighborhood, hired a great architect to do it the right way. We have three small kids in the house now, only one when we moved in. And having a fourth bedroom isn't important enough and we wanted to do it the right way. So, you know, I, you know, we love the community, great neighbors, and we really wanted to stay. And it was really the onus for doing this, doing this project. So, I hope you guys will see that the, you know, the plans are thoughtful, beautiful on the inside, beautiful on the outside, and overall will increase the value of this house and the properties around it. Thanks.
Thank you. I think I have a bunch of questions for Mr. Weber and probably. First of all, I mean, in general, I certainly appreciate the effort in terms of, by you and the owner, in terms of trying to continue towards the back, you know, with the full brick structure, et cetera. But I am, I guess I'll start light. I am a little curious if, considering, I know bulk is, bulk is important to this board and I'm curious whether you considered scenarios where you did drop that plate on the west side there and created more of a dormer situation, thereby, I agree in terms of your pitch, but but you, you could have, one way to sort of reduce bulk and impact would have been to drop that plate and also eliminate your kind of funky triangle situation that you're going to have on the front of the house. So, did you look at scenarios to drop that plate and reduce your bulk on that side?
One of the issues with blocking or lowering the plate is being able to utilize the space within that structure all the way to the outside wall.
But at like, what's your ceiling? I don't know if you had your ceiling height labeled in here?
The west wall is actually clipped. The plate is already set at 90 inches. So, the west wall is actually clipped slightly so that I can still take advantage of getting that bedroom and closet to the outside wall. On the east side, there's more of a severe clip and then a wall that's brought in because that's where a headboard is going to be, understanding that ceiling height is going to come down at that point.
Okay, so it is clipped a little bit, but not?
It is.
Not very much, not like the other side?
Yeah. You start clipping that more severely and on the closet side, you end up having to lower your shelf and rod. And in the bathroom, I think the bigger issue is the vanity and having to clip the mirror, you know, as that ceiling comes down. And David's pretty tall.
You do have a 14, 12 though, so you can make that, you could get up pretty quickly though, right?
No, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, if my wall plate is at 90 and now it is going up severely, so, I mean, you know, if it means dropping it down a foot or six inches, I think that's certainly items that we're willing to discuss. I think the issues that Michael has is greater than that.
I said I was starting easy. Okay, I was just curious. I was, I mean, that doesn't probably, that doesn't add as much to the bulk as some of the rest of it does, but it certainly compounds. I mean, I think one of the things that, I guess, troubled me a little bit when I first saw this is by the book, it meets all the minor variation sections, but I think when I see something like this that's up to four minor variations, I don't know, it seems to me like there should be like some sort of like minor variations, except if you have more than, like any proposal that has, you know, four minor variations, doesn't seem to me like a minor variation. That's just a note for staff. I don't know, something for us to consider in our stuff, but it doesn't seem like a minor variation to me anymore.
I think-
I would have to agree with that. It seems at a certain point, like if they came with 12 minor variances, is that really a minor variance anymore?
It meets the letter, but-
Not the spirit.
Yeah, not the spirit, I don't think. So anyways, but going through then.
Can I address that really quick?
Sure.
I hear, I hear the point you're saying and I think the minor variance leniency is giving, given from point to point. It's a percentage of that specific requirement. But I think in this particular case, it's exacerbated because of the lot size. I think, you know, if this were maybe 1,000 square feet lower and closer to the conforming lot size, I think it might be a little bit of a tougher call. This is so much lower than the, than the conforming lot size. It's a very, very small lot, yet we're not asking for excessive bulk. I think it's, the context comes with the comparing of what it is currently. So, are we asking, the house is tiny now, absolutely tiny.
Well, I think it's all relative and I will get to that. And I think, I guess I'm just going to play my cards out so that you guys can comment and so that we can get some input back from you guys, because if I wait, you'll want to talk later to respond to what I'm going to have to, to my thoughts. So, I'm just going to run through really quickly. Side yard. The side yard, you know, there is an aspect of a kind of maintenance of quality housing stock and things like that and that, that is something that we generally do sort of look for and within reason, kind of support that aspect, along with street side yard. I did look, the majority of the houses on this block have a 50-foot yard. So, at 40 feet, there is a slight width that we're losing here. The house is already substantially closer than the 10 feet to the side, street side yard. So, just off the, you know, so just from pulling that stuff together, I'm fairly comfortable with the 10 feet. But where I have more questions are really on the lot coverage and the impervious surface. Starting with just say, impervious surface, you're 17, less than 17 square feet away from not having that variance. To me, and given, I hear your comments, but I would have to say that these spaces are generous in Evanston standards. To have, to have a master closet that's not, like a master walk-in closet in Evanston is, okay, I've got a five-foot-wide L master walk-in closet. That's an Evanston standard. You know, to have a 20-foot family room or whatever, I guess, to me, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing sort of that minimum change necessary to create the impact that needs to be had. It seems like these are fairly large spaces and to be so close to being over, what made you say, I can't not have that impervious surface variance?
It went back to the second floor and the width, the depth I needed to create the bathroom and the closet. Now, that drove the length out. And keeping all that plumbing, you know, this is all about, you know, doing what's reasonable design, but also what's reasonable for construction cost as well. And a big part of this has to do with reasonable square footage at the end and being able to, quite frankly, finance a project like this. In terms of a marketability standard, as you start reducing the square footage, you start reducing the allowability of being able to finance a project like this. And so, that's a double-edged sword. And not that that necessarily is going to be given consideration as to hardship, but it does play to the reality of being able to even do a project like this and being able to get to what is an acceptable standard as an appraiser is looking at a project like this and comparing it to other homes within a mile that are of similar size and what are their value. That's, that's a huge part of this. And we were, I was actually kind of hesitant to bring up that side of it because I understand it's not part of the hardship equation, but it is a big part of the explanation for getting to just even that minimum side of what's acceptable for a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath home, which currently it's three, one and a half.
I also look-
Sorry, to go back to your question, I guess, is, you know, to eliminate having the impervious surface, yes, could we bring in the back of the house nine inches to alleviate that one? I think that's certainly doable. We haven't, we haven't even discussed it, but, you know, could it happen? I suppose yes. It's such a small amount. Is it required? You know, I suppose that's up to the board.
Moving on to lot coverage, I-
Sorry, I just want to make a, a comment about the impervious surface. Because nowhere in this plan is there any outdoor space. And I find it inconceivable that a family with three kids is going to set their table on the grass, which means there is going to be impervious surface at some point. It's just not going to, most likely, go through the permit process and it will happen. I just find it hard to believe that there is no accounting for what is, again, traditional and expected for a family to be able to entertain outside and to be able to eat outside.
Thanks. On building lot coverage, I guess, I don't know, this isn't really a question, but it's a comment and an observation for the rest of the board. I sort of said in looking at this, okay, if the rest of the houses on the street have 50-foot lots and my expectation would be that we would want to, you know, not, like the scale of the houses in the, in the street should, you know, be, you know, they should remain somewhat consistent to each other. So, if I had, if I did have that 50-foot lot, what could I, what could I build within range? And on building lot coverage, I got 1,890. So, again, we're like, we're still, we're over the standard for what would be allowed for even the other lar, you know, larger lots on the street.
I mean, I have to say, I just have a much more basic problem with this, which is the whole idea of keeping in, keeping, in keeping with the comprehensive general plan. Evanston has this great character to it, where you have really large lots next to really small lots. And it creates these really diverse socioeconomic neighborhoods. And it keeps neighborhoods from becoming too expensive because there are these smaller lots that allow for starter homes and for people to move into the neighborhood. And I think with a lot this small, that's what that is. That is a starter home at the lower end of the economic range that allows somebody to move into Evanston. I don't think it's necessary, I don't think it's appropriate, rather, to essentially double the size of the house in the name of keeping up with the rest of the neighborhood and making the rest of the neighborhood homogeneous. I think that diversity is key to Evanston and it's what drew me to Evanston. It's those little lots next to the big ones. So, I can live next to the fancy house and I don't have to, to make that sort of money to be able to buy, to buy the fancy house.
You know, I guess the problem that I'm, I'm having a little bit is the fact that, you know, we've gone through the extensive, long process of doing what's right and trying to ask for the minimum requirement and follow the minor variance process, go through all those channels, go through the public notice, finally get accepted. And, you know, and when I'm hearing what the debate is, it's about bulk and light and view. Yet, you know, it, me as an architect, if it were a different homeowner and they said, you know what, I bought this house, I want you to tear it down and build a new construction, I could, I could come much closer to the requirements and probably impact what he's arguing much greater because I can go further back into the yard. I could do a garage off the side street. I can go up to 35 feet tall, two and a half stories. So, if we really are talking about bulk, the Alacos could very well agree to say, you know what, we're going to tear the house down, build me a house that, that fits within the requirements and there would be no variance process. But it probably would create a situation that's actually worse in terms of what he's actually, you know, contending. And so, you know, again, we're, I think, we're getting, I think, this is a case where this lot not only is 20% less in width, you know, an average lot in Evanston is 50 by 150, we're substantially shallower too, which is creating this, I think, huge hardship in terms of the lot size, when the requirement is 7,200 square feet and we don't even have 5,000 square feet.
But not when every other house, we have to, I mean, there's a certain, zoning ordinance can't have 5 million different, you know, sections. So, we do sometimes have to look and it's sort of the microcosm of what's going on and, and yes, it's substandard related to say, the other house is on its, in its immediate vicinity, but it's not, it's, it's, it's not quite fair to compare it to like the 7,200. You have to sort of look at it compared to the other houses that are on its block.
But there's precedent for, for the board making that comparison for lot coverage when you have a non-conforming lot. There's, there's, you know, in the major variance process.
Right, but it's, I'm saying it's, there is precedent for that, but it's all, also all relative to what is going on in its immediate area. It's, you, going back to the, I can't remember if you made the comment anymore.
You know, what I'm saying, there's precedent, there's precedent based on the major variance process. So, if there's precedent based on the major variance process, the minor variance process is even more lenient. I'm not asking for as much as a major variance would, you know? But nonconformity in terms of lot size is nonconformity. And the percentage, you know, if you had a conforming lot size, it is well below the standard if it were a conforming lot size. It's not like I'm, I picked 7,200, took 30% of it and reached that limit. I'm actually much less than that limit. And, you know, I'm, I don't want a bunch of teardowns in Evanston. Nobody does. But, I mean, you know, you're leaving the Alacos, and if not the Alacos, then they move, the next homeowner who's growing in a position where they're like, you know, maybe financially it does make more sense just to tear this down and get the bulk I need by going higher and get a master suite on the third floor. Because again, that's another really unique thing about Evanston. They don't have FAR. They have lot coverage and height. Whatever you can fit within it, do whatever you want. You know, I'm always encouraged by that. I mean, I build all up and down the North Shore. It's the least restrictive in Evanston because of that fact, because there is no FAR. They don't limit square footage of a home based on the lot size, you know? And so, literally, if I were to tear this down, I could probably have more square footage by just going higher and make this a 3,500-square-foot house when it's, at the end of the day, less than 3,000.
But at the same time, we're not here because you aren't proposing to tear it down unless that's what you're telling us right now.
No, I'm not. I guess I'm a little bit struggling with the fact that the variance was granted. And now, I wasn't under the impression that we had to re-grant the variance versus just debate his contention, which is light and view.
When something comes before this board, we hear it de novo, meaning restart over, everything's up for grabs again. We're hearing it as if it were brought to us as a major variance at this point.
So, we misinterpreted that then, I guess.
So, my comment on all this is, I'm hearing good arguments for either point of view. My problem is, is that even if we were to say, "Forget it. All the minor variances are no good. You've got to come back with something with no variances requested," it's not going to solve Mr. Gentile's problem. His problem is that there's going to be a second floor on the back of that house, and they could easily come back with a design that's got a second floor that they don't have to talk to us at all, and that's not going to solve his problem. So, we're at, I feel like we're at a little bit of an impasse. You guys clear that up for me?
Not necessarily, though, because the, the, there's a direct relationship between things like building lot coverage and the bulk that's created. And we may not, we may not get to-
But that's not why he's here.
No, but we may not get to Mr. Gentile's ideal goal of, you know, there's only one story sticking out there. We may not, that, he may not realize his ideal, but that doesn't mean that what we're specifically looking at is necessarily correct either. There's, you know, we're looking at the, we're looking at the middle ground where, you know, there's something where there's potential for reason, but it's not this excessive, which might help preserve some of his light, but just not all of it.
I guess I'm just, I'm, so we're going to make everybody unhappy? I mean, that's what we're going to do.
Most likely.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm obviously, I'm obviously in the minority. I can see where this is going. I'm pretty much, I know I'm going to get outvoted, but we're going to make everybody unhappy. That's what our plan is right now.
But I think, doesn't it go back to the spirit of what the minor variance is allowing you to do? And we can debate whether we agree on the minor variance process or not, or how many there should be, but that's why it's there.
But a minor variance is also not automatic, just because it's somewhat less-
Right, and it went through the process and was granted.
But the minor variance has to meet certain, hang on. The minor variance has to meet certain standards. And standard number three is that the requested variance is in keeping with the comprehensive general plan of the zoning ordinance. And I contest that it doesn't. So, I'm making an argument that the zoning administrator, their decision based on standard number three was an incorrect decision. So, I'm not even talking about light and vent because, quite honestly, that argument doesn't fly with me. I don't think that the neighbor gets to say, "For 20 years, I've had this view, and now you're going to build there, and I don't want you to do that because I've always had this view and that stuff."
For all intents and purposes, we do not listen to the view argument.
That, that is not a valid argument to, for, at least for me and Lori. That doesn't matter. If you want the view, buy the piece of property with the view. The end.
But isn't that what he's contesting?
No, that was not his only argument that he made. His lawyer made an argument about standard number three, that it didn't, that the requested variance is not in keeping with the comprehensive general plan. And to my, my thinking and my interpretation of the comprehensive general plan and my view of Evanston zoning and the uniqueness of Evanston, for me, that is the compelling argument, that it's, that this, these variances are not in keeping because you're building so much larger than that lot can, can handle, can support.
Now, just to humor me, because I haven't been here in a couple of years, how many board members are there?
There are seven.
Seven.
Seven board members? I think we'd like to ask for a continuance, if we could, for them, till the next meeting? Regroup?
Yeah, I think, first of all, let me, is there anyone else who wished to speak to us that did come here this evening?
David, would you like to say anything else?
You guys will have a chance to talk at another point. I just wanted to make sure we have a couple of other people in the room. I don't want, we don't like to have people come out and then feel like they didn't get a chance to be heard, so.
Sure, I understand.
But I will note for the record that we are not seeing any further comments at this time based on the testimony that has been, that has been provided to us. I would also, well, I don't know where we're going with the best comments, but I would also note, just for your general information in terms of like how our processes work, that because we're a determining body on this subject, we require four votes in the same direction to make that decision. So, no matter what happened in terms of like tonight or going forward, if we were two to two or three to one or whatever that potentiality could be, that would all would automatically get carried over to our next meeting for all the remaining board members to review that information and go from there. So, I just, just so you kind of understand how we proceed.
Yes, can I ask a few questions to make sure I understand?
Uh, yeah, please. If I could get you the microphone, though, so we can hear you.
These are clarification for me. Is this the group that approved the variance the first time?
No.
Is this the same group? No.
No.
So, this is a different group?
No.
Who is that group?
So, with the process with minor variations is that if a variance is below a certain percentage is basically the standard, if it's below a certain percentage in variance from whatever the numerical number was, then that information is reviewed by city staff. And city staff makes a determination on whether or not to approve that variance or not.
Okay. And then, there, after the appeal was filed, there was more survey or there was another report that I read about the variances. Who writes that?
Probably Melissa or somebody else from city zoning staff, correct?
I believe what you're referring to is the set of standards that staff determined in order to grant the minor variances. I believe that was written up by our zoning officer, Martin Travis, who was one of the three individuals who made the decision.
Made the original decision.
The original decision to grant the variances.
Okay, great. And Ms. McLellan, what you said about if the, if the addition did pass all the variances, but still, you know, disappointed Michael, what is the, what is the result of that? How is that dealt with by this board?
Do you understand his question, or? I don't know if I did.
There isn't any, there's no legal or regulatory result.
Okay.
It, there-
It's in the law or it's not in the law?
Our attorney could probably answer this better, but-
Maybe, if you could rephrase your question, because I don't think I got it, so I'm not sure if I, I don't know if you're getting to the right answer.
I think what he's asking is, do we have to satisfy the desires of the appellant in any action that we take?
We're not required to satisfy-
Is that what you were asking?
Anyone.
And also, basically, for a point of clarification, once we make our determination, if either party is not satisfied with that, then it leaves the city and moves into the circuit court system, correct? So, we can render a decision. You may not be happy, he may not be happy, and if you decide to pursue that unhappiness further, it goes into the, into the circuit court system.
Okay, thank you. That was my next question. I appreciate that. I think that's what I wanted to understand. Okay, thanks.
No problem. It's, it can be a complicated process. Okay, there's been a request for a continuance at this point, and based on the information that you've since gathered, is that still on the table?
Yeah, because we, I mean, it's probably going to go that way anyway, it seems like.
Okay.
I think we'd like some time to regroup.
Okay. There is a request for a continuance on the table. Is there any other discussion from the board or a motion regarding that request?
I would ask that we talk to the appellant and find out when, check availability of both schedules so that we can set a date certain as required for our continuance.
The next available zoning board meeting is February 19th. The meeting after that would be March 5th.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Gentile.
Thank you. So, there's also business?
March 5th?
Yeah, March 5th works for both.
Mr. Loco?
Checking.
Since I heard you.
Yep.
Okay, in that case, I would move in the matter ZVA 13, ZMJV 0001 regarding 3201 Hartcell Street, that we continue this matter until our regularly scheduled meeting on March 5th.
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion?
Will the absent board members have the opportunity to record from tonight in advance of-
Yes, they will be receiving, I believe we do that in DVD coffee these days or something of that nature, so.
Unfortunately, I have a problem that-
Yes, absent, board members that were absent tonight will receive in their packet the recording so that they can be caught up on what the discussion was.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Melissa? Go ahead. All right. At that, we adjourn. I guess I want my, I want my envelope back.